Once again, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight's council workshop. We will have invocation by Mr. Dunn Smith, the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Alvarez.
Dear Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We are lucky to live in this city. Tonight, as when many nights, the council will be involved with funding issues. Some people say money is the root of all evils. Money is paper and coins. It can't talk. How we use money is the issue. Please guide the council as they work hard dealing with funding issues that impact on all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Councilmember Alvarez. We would now have the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Boitt.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that motion.
Are there any questions from council? All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Citizen petitions. Madam Secretary.
CP 23018 Salvador Moreno, on reference citation number 867278-01 KP D. Officer involved, D Varga, number 432, S Officer Clark, suitor number 512.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Mr. Reno, Moreno. Good afternoon, sir. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon to everybody, to the council members. I am Salvador Moreno. I've been residing here in Colleen, Texas for approximately seventeen years, and I've been residing here in Mill County for forty-three years total. This petition is in reference, a citation was, that was written to me on October the twenty-second last year, and what occurred down there, there was a hostile driver in Rosewood, going south of Rosewood, and he was right behind me, bumper to bumper, almost. So I tried to give him the right away, but he six second in front of me, and he just kept on going. And the speed limit right there at Rosewood is twenty-five. According to the officer in this list right here, Mr. David Varga, badge number 422, he stated that I was on forty-seven miles per hour, and that's not correct. I requested to see the unit mirror where it got the speed limit in it, and the officer refused to display that number. And I also asked the other officer, Mr. Clark Struder, badge number 532, and he also refused to display the speed limit that they stated that I was running on. I got a DVD here on the, on the film, if you wish to see it, and it was a truck that was speeding, and he was a hostile driver. Do you all want to see it? It shows the truck, you know.
We don't have access to a DVD player, so you can't continue.
After a while, the truck stopped because there was a unit, there was Officer Vargas right behind us, behind me, and then the red truck stopped right in Rosewood, they stopped. And then when he stopped, I pulled over to the left side and continued, and then I noticed they would follow me, the police would follow me. So at that time, you know, I made a right turn on bus liner, that's what I came in, you know, so I can stay away from the traffic. I was concerned about the safety of my spouse, and also I was concerned about the safety of the officers being on the Bay Road, on the main road. I see some traffic, you know, when the officer stops somebody, and they get hurt, they get bumped, you know. So for that reason, I continued driving and got onto the right side on bus line. Okay. On this picture right here, ladies and gentlemen, I got a little arrow right here, there's a camera right there on the traffic. This is the expressway, this is Rosewood, and there's another one here, and it got another camera right here, and I requested the film on those cameras so I can go to the court and present it, you know, but they refused to give me that information, Colleen PD. Also, I noticed one thing, that this video, it was tempered. It is incomplete, because one of the officer, Officer Clark, was talking to me, at one time, he was about six foot away from me, and when I started writing the numbers of the bumper of the vehicle, the unit, the unit number, he got so close to me right here, he was about this close. That's not necessary to be that close to the, to the driver.
Yes, sir. Also, you're.
It's been tempered, okay? It's incomplete.
Yes, sir.
There's no need for that, you know. And if I wasn't writing the numbers, man, on the bumper.
Yes, sir.
He said, well, that's a number four. Yes, it's a number four. He got so close to me that unnecessary.
Yes, sir.
There was a hostile activity.
Yes, sir. Sir, your four minutes is up. Thank you. You have four minutes. Thank you. Chief Lopez.
You got any question for me?
Um, yes, sir. Councilmember Alvarez have a question for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for taking the time to come here and explain this to us. I guess for, just for my clarification, what is it that you are wanting to happen? Are you just wanting to let us know something that you were unhappy with? Did you go to court on this citation already?
I went to the court, sir. I went to the court, and I plead not guilty, because I can beat it. But, you know, I was threatened, you know, by the prosecutor. If you go and not guilty, I'm going to put another charge, and which one is that? Well, you didn't stop, you know, because the officer was right behind you, because it was not safe. The truck stopped first, so I pulled over to the left, and they got it to a safety area.
Okay, so you did go to court, and you, you got to.
Well, you know, I had to plead guilty, because I was threatened, you know. Is Miss Maria Samuel here today?
No.
Well, she was the prosecutor. She was the prosecutor, you know. Once you get threatened, you know, then it could be more money on the case, that could afford it. They already, they charged me two thirty-four on that fine. You know, that's quite a bit for me, you know.
Okay, I understand.
But, you know, what I'm requesting from the council, you know, these officers, they're gonna go back to the academy so they can get it together, you know, really? There's no need for an officer to get close to the disclose? No, that's not necessary. And then you got the COVID-19 going around, maybe, so you never know.
Yes, sir.
That's unsafe.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You bet. Well, thank you. I'm not going to say, because I got a lot of things to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chief Lopez, were you aware of his complaint?
Yes, ma'am, I was. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, back in November, I don't know the date, Mr. Moreno was stopped for speeding on Rosewood, and when the officer stopped him, Officer Varga stopped him, he indicated that the reason he was speeding, because he was following a truck who was also speeding, and he wanted to report it to police. The law doesn't allow a citizen to speed to capture another person's license plate who was speeding. The prudent thing to do was to recall the license plate and then report it to the police if that was, he believed that that was a hostile driver. So he was cited, Officer Varga was running radar on Rosewood, and radar is very specific, like, when you run radar, there's two cars, there's two differences when you're running traffic enforcement. You have a radar, which is a zone of catch, all the cars coming into this zone, I'll use my arms as an example. But with a laser, which is what Officer Vargas has, it pinpoints the car that's actually speeding. So the laser was pointed at Mr. Moreno's license plate, so in the case that he was doing forty-seven in a thirty-five speed zone. So when he was stopped, he was given a citation for speeding, he was, he showed up to court, Mr. Moreno received deferred adjudication, which is basically dismissal, because once you receive deferred adjudication, and then the case is dismissed, as long as you don't commit another traffic offense within six months. We reviewed the body camera video, Officer Vargas was very professional, he didn't use it in profanity, he explained the process, and he, Mr. Moreno filed a complaint, we attempted to follow up with him, but he didn't follow back up with us, and so we dismissed the complaint and made it unfounded. So that's the details of the incident.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, anyone have any questions for Chief Lopez? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
CP 23020 Laura Coombs, AA Lane Park.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Coombs? Good even, good afternoon, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Hi, I am Laura Coombs. I live at 307 South Forty-Eighth Street. I am here to address some concerns and offer recommendations regarding the recent changes at AA Lane Park. As a resident living across from the park, I fully support the city council's efforts to reduce crime and create safer neighborhoods. I strongly believe that parks play a crucial role in improving communities. In my years living across the street, I had observed that AA Lane Park had seen an increase in usage, particularly by baseball and soccer teams. However, that is no longer the case. I would like to advocate for those who can no longer utilize that field. Many individuals were unaware that the field would be reduced in size by half. The communications regarding the renovations did not explicitly mention this change, which led to confusion and disappointment among community members. Furthermore, I have reviewed the results of the survey conducted by the Parks and Recreation. The survey did not even offer residents the option to keep, retain the baseball field, it offered four other options. Also noted in the surveys, only the children surveyed, out of the three groups surveyed, the adults, the elderly, or the older people, and the children, only the children indicated a desire for play equipment, but it was not even a high priority for them. It was also noted that most children visited the park only when accompanied by parents. It is worth mentioning that there are other parks within a mile or two that offer better amenities for children. However, AA Lane Park's baseball field is unique and serves as a valuable asset to the neighborhood. Another high priority on the surveys was safety. Considering the safety concerns and the park's potential impact on reducing crime, I would like to propose the following recommendations. Ensure that the remaining allocated funds of the three hundred thousand are utilized with a focus on safety and crime reduction. Install proper lighting in the park to enhance visibility and discourage illicit activities. Assess the possibility of relocating the play equipment to a more suitable area within the park. Explore the options of utilizing the adjacent land, if owned by the city, to expand the park and accommodate the needs of the community. Rectify any oversight in the planning process and restore the baseball field as it contributes to making the neighborhood safer. Additionally, I would like to bring to your attention the importance of addressing the visibility issue at the back parking lot. The placement of the play equipment has reduced visibility, potentially compromising the safety of park users. In conclusion, I urge the city council to consider the safety and crime reduction aspects when approving allocated funds for AA Lane Park. It is crucial to make informed decisions that will benefit the community in the long run, the community that uses that park. I am also asking the city council to rectify any mistakes in due process and ensure that the park remains attractive to baseball teams and soccer teams as a practice field. In so doing, we can foster a safer and more vibrant neighborhood. There are those who would like to see, any future funds could also be used to improve the baseball field, such as providing shade over the dugouts and seating area. I also think this is what they were referring to in the surveys when they requested more shade. That was also a high priority. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust that you will take the necessary steps to address these concerns and prioritize the safety in our community.
Thank you. Counsel, do anyone have any questions? Discussion item. Counsel, you have three times each to speak for three minutes.
Madam Mayor, we have citizens' comments.
Did I skip that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Michael Forino. Good afternoon, sir, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon. With regard to the budget, again, I will state that when it comes to going through the budgetary items line by line, that is not something that I am expert at. But with regard to organization, Socrates said, "An angry mob is no more an army than a heap of building materials is a house." We can apply that same rubric to the budget as presented, okay? And first off, my concerns with it last week, when I mentioned that we need a forensic audit, let me correct Mr. Cagle, that was not a forensic audit. You said you saw it, and it was extensive. I've seen the Grand Canyon and could say the same thing. Clearly, you didn't read that, and suspiciously, the quick link on the city's website for the managerial audit, not a forensic audit, is broken, which means that any citizen casually looking for that managerial audit can't find it without some very difficult digging if they're not very computer savvy, or know how the city website is set up. So with regard to that, Mr. Cagle, I don't come up here very often and not know what I'm talking about, so I don't appreciate the attempt at gaslighting after the fact when I left the podium. That was a managerial audit, and it was not a forensic audit, which is what is needed. That's not to put any blame necessarily on the council as it is in its current iteration, but to correct a culture of mismanagement and vagaries in the budget. When I talk about mismanagement of budget for you, Mr. Cagle, I noted that in the budget, we're without an assistant city manager, and a couple of positions have been eliminated and are no longer on the payroll, yet your budget items in there somehow go over budget. So we have less people, but you're spending more money. I don't get that. I mean, that's your office. I mean, I could see if it were a little thought about department or section of the city, oh, that's an oversight, hey, we're missing a decimal point here and there, but I, as a private citizen, it's like, that's your job, and we're having problems getting all the beans in order with your office directly? I have a problem with that, and as should many other people here. I mean, when it comes to budget layouts, there's a lot of vagaries in there, especially we go back to what was brought up last week with regard to office supplies. It seems like everybody in the city suddenly has a very inflated and suspiciously large office supply budget. I mean, to the point of where I called around, there's law firms that are paperwork generation factories in this town that don't have the budget on office supplies that are outlaid just for the city. So I would encourage the council, and this is just in general comment, to use what a gentleman I was speaking with here last week after the meeting know is a complete sentence in the English language. I would encourage, with a finer tooth comb going over the budget as presented to you, to use that word to Mr. Cagle. That's a word that he seems to not be familiar with. No, okay? It's our money, it's your decision, okay? Let's not get away with it, and once again, I do call for a forensic audit, not a managerial audit. And by the way, that managerial audit that you said was very extensive, had you read it, sir, you would note that most of the recommendations in that managerial audit by the firm who did the professional managerial audit, most of those recommendations that they made were not being followed, and now we're in this budget process now where we're underfunded, and we're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul for a lot of these items. So that's a matter of fact, a matter of record, and also as reported by the Colleen Daily Herald. It was a managerial audit, not a forensic audit. Thank you.
And I just want to say for the record, for the ones that's here, we are in the process of currently trying to hire our assistant city manager, but we are in that process. Ms. Anka? Good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I want to thank Mr. Adams for offering to be on the Crime Solutions Committee. I want to give some updates on the committee, and I would like to make a recommendation. Since Mr. Wilkerson resigned, we have been canceling meetings because of so-called lack of quorum. In case this needs to be explained, criminals will not wait for us to have a quorum. They will continue to commit crimes. Canceling opportunities to discuss solutions to crime only helps criminals, not the community. In fact, it hurts the community. Criminals will still sell drugs, they will still shoot people, keep stealing, and so on. Our main concern should be finding solution to prevent crime, not whether we have a quorum. Why give crime and criminals more time? This is what we've been doing. I recommend that we have meetings, whether there is a quorum or not. Just a discussion, a discussion is good, we don't have to take votes. Crime does not care about a quorum. I would recommend updating the council every six months on how the meetings are going. It doesn't have to be a big presentation, it can just be a few minutes, just a brief overview of how things are going. But please, let's not cancel meetings. Criminals don't cancel crime because we're not able to have meetings. Please. As far as the Animal Advisory Committee, please know that this is state mandated, I understand. You're not obligated to like animals, to care about how animals are treated, and yes, some animal advocates are indeed crazy, but a lot of them are not. Some of them are engineers, like me, some of them are police officers. So please, let's attempt to give more respect to the Animal Advisory Committee. I remember your reaction, your discussion last, last week, and it was kind of painful to watch, but, so please, show a little bit more respect, because we, we work for free and trying to make the community better. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick apology, I do agree it was a little inappropriate in the reaction last week to that committee assignment, so do apologize for that. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS 23079, discuss and consider setting a budget town hall meeting on August 17th, 2023, at 5:00 PM at Colleen City Hall, council chambers.
Mr. Cagle.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you asked us to come up with a date, and we're, we're putting a date out there for a town hall budget meeting, but welcome any input you might have on different times or dates.
If anybody have any suggestions, please speak. What'd you say, Councilwoman Gonzalez? August 17th? Is everybody okay with August 17th? August 17th is, is a Thursday. Anybody else got a recommendation? What'd you say?
No.
So everybody be here on August 17th?
No.
You said no?
I don't.
Okay. Do we have another date?
Can you deal with that?
Yes, sir. You okay with that?
I'm okay.
So August the 17th. Thank you, Councilmember Solomon.
Mr. Adams.
Oh, yes.
I was just going to do the motion to approve the recommendation from staff.
Motion, Mr. Cagle. Did you have something you want to say? Is there a second? Okay, Councilwoman Gonzalez, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor for Thursday, August the 17th at 5:00. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
AMN 23017, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of July 11th, 2023. RS 23121, consider a memorandum resolution approving the Metro Ethernet Services contract with Blue Plains Technology in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars annually. RS 23122, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of the replacement stage at the Colleen Civic and Conference Center from Stage Right in the amount of ninety thousand twenty-eight dollars. RS 23123, consider a resolution finding that Encore Electric's application to increase rates within the city should be denied, authorizing participation with the Steering Committee of City served by Encore, and finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by Encore Electric. RS 23124, consider a memorandum resolution appointing council members to various boards and commissions.
Councilmember Adams.
That never cleared.
Councilmember Boitt.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion carries seven to zero.
Madam Mayor, I guess it's a point of personal privilege. Can we have the completed list sent to us because the attachment didn't have it in the agenda?
Once it's approved, it will be coming out. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, public hearing.
PH 23044, hold a public hearing on proposed rate increases for FY 2024. To be effective, October 1, 2023.
Thank you. Mrs. Drake.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mrs. Drake, would you stand by? Mr. Cagle would like to make a statement.
Just before we start, it was clear that last week we had a mistake in our presentation. They gave a pretty crazy result. So we apologize for that. It wasn't, it wasn't intentional. And if you can look in the budget, and that type of revenue was not in the, in the forecast. So you can tell we, we hadn't put that kind of revenue in the budget. But it was a mistake on our part. Got some people understandably upset. And so that's on us. But we corrected it tonight, and we've got answers for all the questions that the council had. One other issue to remind you, when you look at the agenda item, on this item, it's to hold a public hearing on a proposed rate increase, on a series of rate increases. There's no vote on this tonight. And last week, I think we, we made that clear, that hey, September 1, there's no final vote on this till September 12. So there's plenty of time to discuss it. It wasn't trying to be rushed. The next two items with solid waste, water, and sewer rates, we've been talking about a long time, and those are to be voted on tonight. But the presentation you're about to hear tonight is just more input from staff, and there'll be a chance for input from public and from the council. And it's five weeks, I guess, until adoption, whatever, whatever is decided. So, Ms. Drake?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we have some follow-up to some of the items from last week. So we were able to confirm that there was a miscommunication and alert was not sent out this year for the, the public comment period. And then this goes back over the city charter requirement for this public hearing for any fee increases. And then the financial governance policy requires that all the fees for water, sewer, solid waste, drainage, and the street maintenance fees are approved by city council. So some of the questions that we need to follow up on was where's the ordinance of the fee schedule? So the ordinance for the fee schedule is the adoption of the budget. That ordinance adopts the fee schedule. And then the user fees and rates process is part of the financial governance policy as adopted by the city council, which was adopted on February 14. And in the revenue section under users, fees, and rates, it outlines the process. So the user fees are reviewed annually. We calculate the full cost recovery levels, compare them to the current fee structure, and recommend adjustments where necessary. Okay. So then, the user fees and rates process for the city council, it outlines that the city council will approve the solid waste, the street maintenance, water and sewer rates, drainage rates, and then the impact fees. And then all other fees and rates are delegated to the city manager. And then in continuation, it outlines the, the parameters that the city manager would follow. So the fees and rates shall not be higher than the average benchmark fee for the Colleen Rates Average Peer City Review. And then the city manager shall cause to be published an annual fee no later than the end of March, which we do. And then there is a new city charter requirement for the public hearing for any ordinance imposing or increasing a finer fee. And now I'm going to turn it over to Development Services to answer the questions regarding the development fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor and council, city manager. First question, has the city collected the development fees in the past? The answer to that question is yes. The fees have been collected in the past. Have all of the fees of a correct amount been collected in the past? The answer most likely is no. But answer as it relates to can we provide a breakdown of staff time for subdivision plan review and inspections? Yes, we can. This next slide here really shows the breakdown associated with the inspections that are done, associated with new developments. And as you'll see, there are two main categories, the revenues, and that is based on the fees that we charge, and then the expenditures, which is based on the services that we provide, the staff services that's provided in order to provide the inspections and the costs associated with that. So what you'll notice, and I'll sum this up, and it can give as much details as you like, the actual revenues that generate, that would be generated based on the proposed fee structure. In this case here, this proposed fee structure represents the motion of direction from the council last week to cut in half the, the proposed increase. So this column here that shows proposed fees is showing, is reflecting that motion. So if you total all of that up for the number of projects that we listed for each category, the inspection fees that would be collected from that would be the $77,500. So that's the revenues. The services, the costs of providing those services, those inspections are detailed under the expenditure category. And as you will notice, that number, that total number for providing all of those services, about $214,000. If you add to that fuel and vehicle maintenance, the total overall number comes to about $223,000. So 77,500 versus 223,000. And so that means that the city, for the services put out, for the same categories of projects, for the services put out, that we're looking at a cost recovery in terms of dollars that's coming in for what's put out at about 21% to 22%. Well, actually 34% for this, for this particular one. I would say, based on, if we did this calculation based on the current fees, then that return would obviously be lower, and that's about the 22%. So again, the costs of, that we're, what we're getting back from the fees that are being charged, that would be charged based on this proposed fee structure, would be 34, about 34% of what the actual cost that the city is spending associated with inspections. Any questions on this slide before I go to the next one?
So Mr. Revel, would you save the last 15 lines before that? I'm sorry, I missed something. So you went from this is for the motion of direction.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you said, if this happened, that's where it threw me off.
So last week, we, we had a proposed fee increase associated with inspections. And we received direction from the council for each fee that was proposed to be increased to cut that increase, that proposed increase in half. The proposed fee column reflects that direction received for council, received from council. So for, for those properties where the size of the property is 1 to 10 acres, that fee is actually $2,500 for inspection. And whereas 10 to 50 acres, it would be $10,000. And whereas for over 50 acres, that fee would be $15,000. If we collected all of that based on this number of projects, which is a total of 10, the capture that the city would take in would be $77,500. The, the second half shows the actual expenditures, the actual services, the actual staff performing the inspection work. And it's for each one of those categories. And as you can see, if it's for 1 to 10 acres, it shows you the, the number of inspections that's performed by staff, the hours, or 1.5 hours, and then the total estimated hours, and then the estimated cost. That estimated cost column is reflective of the salary expenses that's paid for staff, as well as the, the salaries that's paid for staff, as well as the salary-related expenses. So the city has the budget for FICA, it has a budget for Medicare, has a budget for pension, and all of those things, all of those things has to be taken into account, those salary fringe numbers.
So the estimated cost is only salaries?
City, city staff, well, the city staff, staff time, and the salary-related expenses. And then there's also a line item for fuel and vehicle maintenance.
All right.
Which is... Yep. And Andrew was reminding me that these, actually, these numbers represent the, the October 1st. Since October 1st of 2022, this is actual time and hours that we've spent.
All right. I, I just needed some clarity on the top and bottom. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Proton.
That was, I'm going to tag off Mayor's question.
Yes, ma'am.
When she asks you about the estimated loss first, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
I'm well.
That's the first something we should always do, is make sure we say hi. But on the estimated laws, Mr. Cagle, does that bring a problem to our next budget and to our payroll and to the people that may need to be paid?
No, ma'am.
That loss?
No, ma'am. It's just, so other, other revenues cover it, whether it's property taxes, sales taxes, other revenues. We have, we have a balanced budget originally based on the original fees, and then from the direction from the council last week to, to reduce the increases. There's still fee increases, but the council asked us to reduce those by half. It's still, still moving in the correct direction. And we have a balanced budget to present to you with those changes that you've made.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Revel, for taking the time to come back with this. I wanted to just clarify a few things. I know this was one of the questions that I had last week. And you mentioned that these fees have been collected in the past. I believe my question was a little more specific. Have they been collected consistently in the past? And I would even go further than that. If they have been collected consistently in the past, how much revenue has the city been getting off of these fees, these specific two fees, inspection of public infrastructure and plan review fees? How much have we collected over the past year since their inception in 2015? I don't believe that they've been collected consistently. So again, going back to our discussion last week, you know, you have, number one, a sticker shock with the number. We clarified the biggest issue, which it's not per acre, and it's not per inspection. That, that took out the majority of the, the rub on this deal. But the second is, you know, if it's on the books for, let's say, one of these fees for existing, for $10,000. But it hasn't been collected consistently. It's still a new fee to the person paying it because they haven't always been paying it. Now, if you made it collect it from this guy, you made it collect it from this guy, but it hasn't been consistent, then it's still, you're raising something that, that these consumers are not used to paying. So that's, I think that's where the, the motion of direction came to reducing the proposed increase. And I saw that the, the media said that we were reducing the fees by 50%, which was incorrect. We proposed to reduce the increase by 50%, not the fee. And lastly, I wanted to add that, you know, there's a lot of services that the city provides that we don't collect fees on, that we don't get reimbursed for. You know, we don't collect fees for guys mowing the, the lawn at the parks. You know, there may be a small fee collected for someone to use a pavilion or to use a park, but that by no means covers the staff hours to do that job. So I don't want, I don't want fellow taxpayers to think that this is something that, that is atypical to this situation because there's a lot of fees, or a lot of services that the city provides that, that does not collect fees, you know, to reimburse itself for. But I appreciate you, you coming back with this information.
Consistently, I agree with you. It hasn't been consistently collected. There is somewhat of a challenge to kind of look at all of that stuff historically because of the way the past accounting was done. But we, we did make corrections related to the beginning of this fiscal year. But prior to that, there could have been collection, but to know exactly what fee it was related to, the systems were not that sophisticated, were not set up that sophisticated enough to be able to track that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Revel, I know that it says 2,299 number of inspections. Has, has it gotten stricter over the years? Or has it always been that way where we do that number, that many number of inspections? You know, is this something that just started within the last few years? Or has, is, is it a requirement that this number, because I know that part of that is, I know, and we've talked about this in the past, where it used to be easier, not that it was right, but it used to be easier. And I think that we need to change that mindset. But maybe because we are trying to do something with the city as far as getting it in the right direction, we, we're trying to make it stringent. But in the past, how many, is, is that number much higher than it has been in the past? Or, or, or it's about the same?
Sure. So I don't have, I do not have the past numbers, so I'll let Mr. Zager's address that. But I will tell you, these numbers, these inspection numbers represents the actual inspections that have been performed by staff since the beginning of this fiscal year.
This year.
Yes, sir. And then I also know, especially as it relates to on our stormwater program side, that permitting laws have changed, and that we've had to make adjustments based on those state requirements and based on the state issued permit to us. Mrs. Zager, you have anything else you want to add to?
Yeah, I think in general, if you look at the overall picture, our, our inspections are consistent with what it's always been. We've always had to have inspectors go out and observe and make sure, ensure that the infrastructure that's getting built meets our standards. There has been in the past some testing that was done where we used to have nuclear densometers, so we were doing compaction testing, but those machines got to the point where we couldn't use them anymore. We got rid of those, that, that performance, but our inspectors are still out there observing the testing that's being done by other parties. Mr. Revel was, is correct. We are doing more inspections in regard to erosion control as, as what we are required per our permit from TCQ. So where we may be giving up some inspections that we used to do, we're having to do more. So in general, it's about the same. Our inspectors are always out there on a daily basis, making sure that everything is getting done.
Yeah. And the reason is because I know that it's not just your department, but when we go through the budget, I know that we have a lot of shortages, and you guys are required to do more nowadays. And sometimes when we do this budget, as we already know, you know, it's hard to keep up with the amount of employees we need as a city to do what is necessary to do. And I think that maybe this is some area that kind of reflects that, you know, especially if you have to do more inspections, you know, because there's a lot more requirements. We're trying to do that, and that's probably something that, you know, we have not kept up with. And so, but, but with that said, you know, I just want to know, because I, I think that there is an angle here that people are trying to get. And I think for the most part, most people understand that. I was very clear last week. It, it has nothing to do with the staff. You guys are very smart. I respect you. It has nothing to do with the builders. You know, I don't care if the builders pay. I think, you know, personally, I know the builders can afford it. So it's not about them. And I made mention last week, the reason that I objected, because it was such a high increase. And my biggest concern was those big prices going from 5,000 to 15,000. I don't care about the smaller ones. You can bring that back. And it had nothing to do with them, the builders. It has to do with our taxpayers, with our citizens. And I keep saying that. That's not reported. It's like I'm in bed with the builders with, that's the furthest thing from my mind. Me as a realtor, people got the wrong misconception. I sell existing houses. I don't sell brand-new houses. They have their own builders rep that do that. So it doesn't benefit me. On the contrary, if home prices go up, that's a benefit for me. But yet, as a councilman, that is my biggest concern, is because I know that in our city, one of the biggest attractions, and we talk a lot about this, is affordability. one of the biggest attractions, and we talk a lot about this, is affordability. And so, is $75, $25, $50 gonna hurt them? No. What it does is it limits them from building. We've already lost some developers, they left because of the frustrations that sometimes, whether it's communication, whether it's additional fees. So my thing is, you know, we need to work with the development group, just like we work businesses. We spend money to try to attract businesses, and here we are, trying to, you know, get people to leave, that bring in tax revenue and stuff like that. But the biggest thing, ultimately, and we all know this, that the one that pays for it is not the developers, it is the home builder. And when a new home goes up, guess what? Everybody's price around there goes up. When that happens, their prices, their tax valuation, ad value goes up. And as I mentioned last week, 66% in the last five years. That is my concern.
Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you.
Mayor Proto.
Just a quick question.
This is your second question.
Everyone is given the same price when they build. When I call your office and I say, hey, I'm about to start a new development, do someone get a list of everything that's there? And you go over and say, well, this is what it's gonna cause you to do these things, this inspection, this inspection, and your total is this before you go out? Or do you go out, get to the site, and then determine from the inspections what a developer... I'm just trying to understand, what is the process? Do we go out there and get it, or do we get it when we get out there? Are we well-known before we go? What happens?
So, we've been actually, since I've been here, been trying to clean it up to make it so it's not a question mark. You know, in the past, it was per inspection. You don't know what the bill's gonna be. So we've looked at that, we try, especially when it comes to the subdivisions, since you don't know how, the amount of inspections, you know our inspectors are going out there on a daily basis. We shifted it to this lump-sum fee. It was looking at how many days, what we're looking at getting a, you know, compared to what we've been paying, and start get it to where it is very clear to those developers that at the beginning, when they're gonna be building, they know what fee they're gonna expect.
So it's well-known ahead of time.
We tried to do that, so we're trying to make it clear. Obviously, there's always more communication we can do, and we're working on that, but we're trying to simplify it and make it very easy for a developer or builder to know what they're gonna spend.
Thank you.
Mr. Revel, Mr. Cagle, one of the things that I would like to see, and I talked to you previously about this, and one of the things that Councilwoman Gonzalez have a concern about, and probably others, is that the process. So one of the things I would like to see is a workshop on the time a developer or builder pick up their application until the project is completed. I think that, giving that education knowledge to the public, is very important to know how do this process work. That's important to me.
Any more questions? Thank you both. Oh, I thought you was finished. I apologize. Continue.
So we just dealt with the analysis associated with the inspections. So the next slide deals with the analysis associated with the plan review. And so, as you'll see here, again, it's broken out into two major categories, again, the revenues that's collected based on the fees. These proposed fees represents the motion of direction that we received from the council, and then also the expenditure category. And so what you'll notice is, for the 10 projects here, that total cost in term, that total revenue capture would be $73,750. And then for the services that would be provided for that same 10 projects across, those three different categories would be at almost 105, or the 104, 520, 90. And so that represents about, in terms of cost recovery for the staff services put in, this fee would allow for a cost recovery of about 71% with the services provided by the city. If you sum all of that up, and looking at both the plan review that's done, as well as the inspection, the combined overall cost of city services comes to $327,000. And that overall recovery comes to about $151,500, or 46% based on the proposed fee structure. The next series of slides really...
Mr. Revel, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said $352,000?
Yes, ma'am. What I did was, is I took the 104 number, and I added it to the 213 and the 9,000 to get to 327, because that represents the cost, the city services, what it costs the city to provide, plan review and inspection services.
And I'm sorry, what was that number again?
327,000.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next few slides really should be reflective, again, of the council's motion of direction last week to cut the increases in half. So this shows that in terms of the subdivision variance fee, you see what the current fee is, proposed fee is gonna be the 250, and on. I won't belabor on this if the council don't want me to, okay. So every one of these are reflective of your direction on last week. Now, there is...
Mr. Revel, there's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Alvarez.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. And I know this was, again, coming from last week's motion of direction. My understanding, the motion of direction last week was to strictly reduce the proposed increase for the two specific development services fees only, which was the construction plan review and the inspections of public infrastructures for subdivisions. I think all the other ones, and I may have misread, but Councilmember Segarra alluded to this earlier, you know, all the other ones that are, we're talking 20 bucks, $7.50, I don't think there was much issue with those increases. It was specifically those two that I believe was the majority of the heartache. So moving forward, I would recommend that we reestablish the rest of those fees back where they were originally proposed.
Mr. Cagle?
I second that.
Was that a motion or...? No. Was it?
Sure, why not?
Mr. Cagle?
Right. I was just gonna say that the motion was to cut development fee increases in half, so we went to every single development fee. And if, to be more specific, on those two pages, there's a motion and a second that we can make those changes.
All in favor of the motion of direction? Yes? Yes, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have one clarifying question, if this will come back up. Oh.
Mr. Revel, please.
Well, I need to show the slides. Okay. So, Councilman Alvarez, if you look at the subdivision construction plan review, there are three line items there. And then the subdivision inspections, there are two line items there. Which two were you referring to?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was referring to the process. I know that there's three under, or...
Oh, okay.
Three under inspection of public infrastructure, well, that's one process.
Okay.
And then the other process being the plan review process.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion of direction? Yes, all opposed? No? Motion of direction carries six to zero with Councilmember Boyd not voting on the item. Mr. Revel, you can continue.
Yes, ma'am. So that should conclude my participation here. I'll give it back to Ms. Miranda.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Segarra, this is your second time. Do you have a question?
Well, we already voted on it, but I was just gonna tap on Mr. Alvarez's point that the reason, you know, I was against the big ones, because when you calculate that 5,000 to 15,000, that's a 550% increase. So that was my concern, and I'm not against that. My thing was that we just did it way too quickly in one single year, and I think we need to spread that over, because you put that in perspective, I mean, there's nothing you, 550%, that is incredible. And so I just wanted to, you know, thank Mr. Alvarez for doing that, because yeah, that's true. It only applied to those big, major increases. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mrs. Drake, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one remaining item. It's a correction for last week. On aviation, we had two slides that the fees were actually posted with a change, and they need to stay the same. It was just an error, and it would be for the badge for replace of lost and stolen, suspended or revoked, and it's this item and this one. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cagle, moving forward, during our budget, we have to really make sure that all our numbers are correct, so we won't have to go through that big misunderstanding that we had last week, and also the public input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is open. Ms. Anka, you have four minutes. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I appreciate the calculation that the staff provided that does explain what their thinking is and how they came up with those fees, but I do want to clarify something. Overall, there is no loss. Overall, there is a big gain for the city with a new subdivision. Please remember there are water fees, wastewater fees, drainage fees, property tax, sales tax, forever, not just one year. So yeah, maybe the first year, a new subdivision has a loss, but then you have a gain forever. So I think it's a little bit inaccurate to say that the city has a loss. And inspectors don't just get paid from inspection fees, they get paid from all kinds of other fees that the city, again, receives forever from a new subdivision. This only shows a one-time loss and disregards all the gains that keep going. Yes, developers do make money. They also risk losing a lot of money. Let's not punish them for knowing how to make money. They bring development, they bring property tax, sales tax, and so on, everything I, and jobs, too. Regarding animal services fees, I personally recommend to leave the first redemption at $20, because we want animals, all animals, to go back to their owners. If we increase the fees to regain custody of an animal, there's a high probability that some people will not be able to afford them, and they will end up being abandoned at the shelter. Also, with owner surrender, if you increase owner surrender fee, there's a high probability people would just dump the animals. I recommend those fees to remain as they are. Thank you.
Michael Forino, you have four minutes, sir.
Unusual for me to comment on fees with anything to do with animal control, but I asked the council here, we had an outlay from Petco totaling $300,000, $100,000 over three years, if I'm correct on that. If I'm wrong, I will accept any correction. Additionally, this time last year, we were all doing cartwheels over us taking over Fort Hood Animal Services, and if I recall, that was something in the terms of a million dollars, you know? We're, total that all together, we've got a million and a half dollars that were thrown at us. Why are we even discussing any animal fees? I mean, we paid, in many people's opinion, three times the value of what the building was worth for the building Dr. Joyner sold us, and it, at time of purchase, was already inadequate for what we needed to expand. I'm wondering why we didn't build an annex or an addition to the existing animal services station that we have down near the high school, or what we're doing with this. I'm just kind of confused as to where we had this large influx of money that came in that we didn't have to raise, we didn't have to go out and collect, it just showed up, and all of a sudden, that money's not being talked about or accounted for. I would just like some clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa Brown. You have four minutes.
I also have a question of clarity that's very important before I really get started, which is, OR 23-013 and 014 are also listed under the caption for public hearing number 10, or for item number 10. Are they supposed to be part of the public hearing?
We already voted on the consent agenda. You're up here for PH-23044. You have three minutes and 32 seconds.
I, well, I understand that, but PH-23-044 has two other items listed under it, it's not on the consent agenda. Their ordinance is to increase rates in chapters 24 and chapter 30. If it's supposed to be part of the public hearing, I'm very disappointed to see that it's misleading to the public, that this was their opportunity to talk about increases to water and solid waste fees, because not a single one of those increases have been included in that presentation that has now been shown twice and corrected. Citizens didn't understand that this was their one and only opportunity to come up for public hearing and discuss how they feel about increases to their water fees and increases to their trash removal. If they're in an apartment, that's going to affect their rent, because multifamily units are counted as commercial buildings. Water is going to affect everyone when we start talking about volumetric increases, again, that is going to increase rents. The city council keeps talking about the concern and the need for affordable housing. Let's think about how each and every single one of these fees impact that. But let's go a little bit further, because now I'm hearing that, you know, some of these fees are gonna be reverted back to the initial proposed increase, which I'm surprised that there was any motion of direction or any vote on anything prior to the start of a public hearing. Typically, that would come after the public hearing. However, it does give me the opportunity to talk about the fact that in changing those back, it's not just builders, not just developers, that are going to be affected. If you change any of those back, it affects personal property owners. Small businesses that are trying to purchase buildings, hearing in the city of Colleen, outside of the HOD, if they want to purchase anything downtown or in the revitalization zone, these increased fees are going to affect them if they need to renovate or remodel. This is going to affect homeowners who want to renovate or remodel. This is going to affect anybody who's coming in to help us with that revitalization. So these are not fees that only affect the builders and the developers, this affects a lot more people than that. I think the other important thing is, the really only deep-dive discussion that's been had on this is about those development and planning fees. There are a lot of other fees that will affect people. I'm not interested in renting a space and having to pay extra to be able to have vendors or sell tickets, and then have to give a percentage of that back to the city when I'm already paying for the space. Those are things that have not been discussed yet, and in four minutes, I cannot go through everything in here that I think is important and pertinent to the citizens that we should have a say on. So my request to the council is, take your time, and since there will be a town hall on the budget, and this is part of the budget, let it be discussed then, table it, let it be part of a full back-and-forth dialogue at the town hall, and then make an educated vote on it. Thank you.
Josh Welch. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Counsel, good evening. Thank you all for having me. Appreciate it. I just kind of wanted to echo what a few other people have already brought up, so I'll be brief. Just that a lot of these fees, and we keep talking about some of the development and... and review fees and some of the development fees, but what's in here is much bigger than that. We will, you know, we as developers, if we can incur the cost, we'll incur the cost. We're gonna pass it on to the builder, and they'll pass it on to the home buyers. So, you know, whatever we do and whatever y'all pass, you know, we'll work with y'all. Being in the development and building business, when I've said this multiple, multiple times, it's a public-private partnership. We have to work with the city, y'all work with us, and it's, and we have to work together to be able to make things work. So, we're happy to do what we can, trying to, you know, help, help that partnership. The only disappointing thing that I kinda brought up last week was just kinda the process with this, and not knowing till the day before that, you know, it was coming up and not really having a whole lot of time to be able to go through and provide some input. It is good to know, though, that, you know, we've got several weeks to be able to look at these, and up until the budget gets approved in September, you know, we can take a look at them, and I'm glad that we found some of the errors and issues that were in there, and we were able to get those corrected and get some better, and get from staff some better information. We had a meeting this, earlier this week with Mr. Jaggers. He helped fill in a lot of kinda the missing pieces and parts, and gave us some good feedbacks, some good information. So, just thank you for that, and appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gary Purser. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about, if I can, if I can, y'all just have to shut me down, the articles in the paper, and they insinuated that I fund council members. I can tell you right now, I've never given Mr. Adams any funding. Mr. Segaro has been in public office for 10 years plus. I have never, ever given Mr. Segaro any campaign funding. Ms. Cobb, I've never given her any. I've never given Mr. Solomon any, Ms. Gonzalez any, or Mr. Alvarez any. So, I take that offensive, that the paper would put something like that and indicate that.
You didn't say me, but I know I don't vote, but I want that to go on record.
You too. I've never given you any money.
Sorry about that, sir. I took about 10 seconds.
Well, I was talking to council members. I apologize, Mayor. But I don't like when there's a narrative, a false narrative out there, and it reflects on these people, and that's wrong. And the paper should not do those kinda things. Now, as far as my public comment, I'd like to pull back up the cost recovery analysis development inspections. That slide, I would like for y'all to pull that back up, and I don't wanna be charged time while you're pulling it up.
Well, she just stopped, and you lost 10 seconds, but I'll give you back the 10 I took and the five that she was pulling it up. So, but the council do have this on their tablet.
Okay. Well, I need to be able to look at it, or I can go through it with you.
Edwin, can you hop up there and forward it?
Counsel, y'all okay with Mr. Purser going through the slides? Counsel, are y'all okay?
Scroll back. That's number one. Right there. That one, that's the one I wanna talk about. Yes, yes, ma'am. If you look at that, and I think that y'all referred to it a while ago, y'all gotta have accurate information, and that slide for Bubba Purser is not accurate. When I look up there and I see estimated inspections, whoever controls the numbers and whoever controls the narrative, that's hard to overcome, and it's guesstimations. But you look at 1 to 10 acres, you've got 750 inspection hours on 1 to 10 acres. Okay, maybe, maybe not. Then you go to, from 10 to 50, and we got 625 hours. So, I've got these people down here telling me that 750 hours for 10 acres or less, and then I can do 40 or 50 acres and it's less hours. Guys, these people that control that are not accurate, and y'all need to make them accurate, and y'all need to make sure that it becomes accurate. And they got over 50 acres, 2,200 inspections. I can do, I can do that in a year. So, if I do it in a year, that tells me that I gotta come out there 2,300 times in a year? That's not accurate, guys. That is not accurate. And it's very frustrating for me when I see these things, and I know they're not right, and these people put these numbers together, and they sell y'all a bill of goods, it's wrong. It's just wrong. And you should expect more of your people than that, and you should expect more of whoever. Try to be nice. But that is a problem for me. They don't have 2,200 inspections on my job in a year. I mean, that's every, if they were out there every day, that ain't but 365. If they're out there twice a day, that's 700. I mean, they just pulling numbers out of the air, guys, and to get back to, the city has a cost when we develop. I get that. I don't argue that. But the narrative is not the taxpayer paying the burden. That's not the narrative. The narrative is, it costs us money to do plan review, to do inspections. We have a cost in that. And the other side of that is, we make money for y'all. When you look at your fee, the city can only get money from fee-oriented services and taxes. That's only, y'all not in business. So, your fee-oriented services and your tax base, when you add all that up, and you take a piece of property that has 100 million, 150 million dollars worth of taxable value on your avalorum tax, you've got water customers, you've got sewer customers, you've got solid waste customers, and then guess what? They go down and shop, and you get 8%, I don't get 8%, I apologize, you get whatever your cut is. They pay 8%. You total all that up, you don't lose money, and anybody that says y'all lose money, how have we been in business for 100 years if you're losing money every time we do something? That narrative is wrong.
Mr. Purser, your time is up.
Well, I would like another minute, ma'am.
Sir, you used four minutes. Your time is up.
I would like to request another minute from a council member.
Well, all of the residents have four minutes. Your time is up. Please take your seat, Mr. Purser. Public hearing is closed. There is no actions on this item. Madam Secretary, next item.
Consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Solid Waste, to amend commercial solid waste rates. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 24, Solid Waste, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas, by amending solid waste rates, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Renus, are there any updates to your slides?
No, ma'am. We went over them last week.
Counsel, would you like him to go back over them? No, sir, they don't need you to. Can I get a motion in a second to approve OR-23-013? Councilmember Boyd.
Make a motion to approve OR-23-013.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you. Any conversation? No? All in favor? Yes? All opposed? No? Motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Adams not voting on the item, but he is here. Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
Consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Water, Sewers, and Sewage Disposal, to amend water and sewer rates and other changes as presented. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 30, Water, Sewers, and Sewage Disposal, by Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas, by amending residential and commercial water and sewer rates, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Renus, are there any updates to your slide?
No, ma'am.
Counsel, would you like him to go back through them? Thank you, Mr. Renus. Councilmember Gonzalez, you were on there, but you went-
I was moved to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
OR 23-014.
What'd you say?
I moved to approve.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor? Yes? All opposed? The motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Adams not voting on the item, but he is here. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Boyd, I mean, sorry, yes, Councilmember Boyd and Councilwoman Gonzalez. I'll come back to you.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Okay, all in favor? Mean adjourn.[1792.11]